Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's work session for the Portsmouth Planning Board for June 12, 2008. I will read the four items under the draft revised zoning ordinance under the tonight's agenda. Item A is a continuation of Article 9, Site Development Standards. Item B is new and revised definitions. Item C is Article 10, Signs that we'll have a preliminary discussion on. And then, item D is other sections. Before we adjourn for tonight's meeting, I just want to go through the planning board schedule for the next couple of weeks. So, before we get into it, I'd like to welcome Roger Clum, who's here, from the Building Department. He is our sign guru. So, thank you for being here, Roger. And with that, I think I'll turn it right over to Rick Tainter from Tainter &amp; Associates.
Okay, thank you. Well, the first item in the agenda in terms of continuing discussion of Article 9 was really in case there's any issues that you had left over from our previous meeting on this. I don't have anything specific I want to add, but we kind of were running through it. We've had a lot of stuff to go through with all the numbers that we looked at and the specific items. So, in case you had anything that you wanted to add to that discussion that was the purpose of that. Is there anything on that?
I think we covered that pretty thoroughly last week.
Very easy, good. Okay. Then we had this, also last week, we handed out, in connection with that section, we handed out some new and revised definitions that we've been working on. Quite a few of them have to do with the Article 9 changes defining different types of senior housing uses, automotive uses, industrial uses, and a couple of other things. And so, this is a four-page handout dated May 29. Are there any questions on the first page of this, having to do with senior housing uses?
Does everybody have a copy of the 529? Do we have one for Councilor Dwyer?
It was out in the last pack.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's an extra.
Anything about any of these, the senior housing uses, assisted living, congregate care, continuing care? Some of these things aren't in the ordinance at this point, and depending what happens, they may or may not get into the ordinance. But this was just in order to have something to go along with the parking standards, and we'll be working on the use regulations also at the same time, the definitions to go with those parking standards that we talked about last time.
If there aren't any questions or comments, I was going to say, maybe if you can just hit on each page, maybe if there was any discussion behind some of the reasons why something changed?
Oh, well, these are, I believe, what's happened right now is you have an assisted living planned unit development in the ordinance, and it hasn't really been used, where there's a proposal that is being obviously discussed, where there's some senior housing proposal on Borthwick that is something that we're looking at zoning regulations for. In connection with that, and with connection with some future, whatever might happen in the future, we thought it would be good to update the definitions of these four types of senior housing based on what is currently, these are current standards. And a lot of this comes from either state law, or the building code, or general nationwide definitions. So, the distinctions under senior housing, there are independent senior housing dwelling units, independent units, which are just apartments that are restricted to people over a certain age. If they're called age-restricted units, they tend to be restricted to people who are 55 and over. If they're elderly units, they tend to be 62 and over. But in the general context, we're calling those age-restricted. Federal law allows you to start at 55 for those units. Then, there are the units that are assisted living, which are, in which some personalized services are provided, and that's really defined by insurance regulations, Medicare regulations, and also, these are defined in New Hampshire state law. And then, congregate care facilities is a type of facility where you may have a smaller kitchen or kitchenette, but the residents can eat in a common dining room for at least one meal. And then, the continuing care retirement community is the range of facilities where you may have some independent living units, some assisted living units, and perhaps some nursing care units, skilled nursing care units. So, you have the whole range of things. So, this is the kind of state-of-the-art, and as we all get older, more of us will be looking at these types of things if we can afford them. And so, we thought it would be a good idea to have these in here because you may be getting more and more proposals for these as the years come along.
Don, Tony, and then Councilor Dwyer.
Based on what's in the public record about the zoning change request in Borthwick Forest, would it be fair to say that this falls into more of age-restricted housing than another category?
It has age-restricted and assisted living units in it.
My follow-up question is, in terms of the zoning, density and setbacks and all that sort of stuff, do they differ significantly with each of these?
Well, they could because, the reason density could change is because the age-restricted type of unit is really like an apartment or even a single-family home. And it's, the only difference there is between it and a subdivision of an apartment building is that it's restricted by age. And I qualify for age-restricted housing. So, it doesn't really affect impacts, except that you don't have children in the units or large numbers of children. So, in that case, you might have a very different density type of impact than you would with, for example, congregate care, where you've got much smaller units, more units can fit in a building, you have common dining areas and so forth. So, the answer is it would be a policy issue, what kind of density you want to allow. But you would want to provide for each of them separately. You wouldn't want to have one standard that applied to both assisted living and congregate care and independent living because they have different impacts, different numbers of cars. And that's why in the draft regulations we handed out, we talked about last week in terms of parking, some of the units had, I believe, 0.5 cars per unit or per resident, I think, and some had 1.1 or 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit.
I guess my concern is having an applicant call it one thing when in reality it's another.
Well, that's part of the development review process and determining which it actually falls into.
Thank you. Tony?
Sort of related question. I was looking for the answer, and I'm sorry if I missed it in this. So, can you have an assisted living facility that's not age-restricted?
Yes. Yep. You could. You could have an assisted living facility that was really for handicapped persons.
That's what I was thinking of. And same with, same with the congregate care?
You really could. Maybe the senior housing heading is misleading at that point. I mean, generally, the great majority of these are, because of our population, for senior citizens, you know, at some level, or older people. But it's possible that you could have, and in fact, many of them do have a percentage that is, you know, you might have 10% of the units set aside for non-elderly handicapped persons and disabled persons.
My thought was, I was thinking, I thought there was a town, and I may be wrong, fortunately I haven't had to deal with it, is that there was a brain injury center in town, a lot of those people.
It's not a residential.
Krempels?
Yeah, it's a day.
Yeah, clinic kind of thing.
Okay, so that'd be adult daycare, group daycare.
Okay, adult daycare, there we go. All right. I just wanted to make sure everything's copied.
Councilor Dwyer?
Building on what John was asking, because I had the same thought that, and your answer was helpful, that Borthwick is really kind of a combination. So, it makes me wonder if we're really talking about, as it says, uses rather than facility. Do you know what I mean? Because it sounds like there are many combinations of these possibilities, and the heading is uses. But then, some of the language becomes more like a center, and I don't know if that's splitting hairs, or if we'd be applying these two uses, and we might want to acknowledge somewhere a combination.
Well, I think you're right about that. This one at the bottom of the first page, continuing care retirement community, really comes into that because it talks about multiple uses in there, or multiple.
Then, maybe it should have an "or" instead of an "and," and maybe that would take care of it.
Got it. Before the word skilled?
Yeah, unless the CCRC is only the full continuum.
Exactly, I know what you mean. Yep, yep. Okay, we'll look into that some more.
That's a good point.
And one of the important things related to this is that when you have a, when you have a facility, such as the one that's being proposed, the use regulations and the, we'll have to address the individual components of those uses, as well as the parking regulations and so forth, and the density regulations that Don asked about.
So, one doesn't supersede?
Right. You would look at each of the components and kind of, it's in some ways, as Rick Hoppe was talking to us about last week, when he was talking about looking at parking and looking at the individual components of the use of a building, and a hotel, and the restaurant, and so forth, it's the same type of thing.
It's additive.
Because if you can think about it, the independent units have, you know, one type of impact, but it's the residents who are having the impact, you know, they're coming, driving, and so forth, and having visitors perhaps, the, you know, in the nursing care, the, it's a different type of impact because it's a lot more staff, staffing and providing assistance. So, you have a different, you have to provide, you know, short-term daytime parking spaces as opposed to nighttime parking spaces and that sort of thing.
So, it really is additive?
It can be additive, yes, yeah. Now, we actually talked about these individual, on the second page then, we talked about these individual automotive-related uses quite a bit with respect to the parking last time. And I think that, I'm not sure there's much more to say about them unless you have specific questions. I don't try and look back at my notes and see whether we said anything particular about those. I think we just changed one parking regulation, but that was it. Any questions about these uses? Do you think these are useful distinctions?
Don?
I don't understand why maintenance, under motor vehicle painting or bodywork, maintenance service and engine repair may be performed as an ancillary function to the bodywork, and yet, in motor vehicle repair, you install newer used motor vehicle parts such as mufflers, brakes, or tires. Seems to me that it should be, you know, motor vehicle repair includes engine repair and that. And it's a small point, but bodywork is bodywork is bodywork. And what you could do is you could have somebody with a, come in as a body shop and then wind up doing a little bit of bodywork and an awful lot of engine rebuilding.
Well, that's, it's an interesting point. I think that the reason that, and for anybody who knows more about this than I do, I'll be happy to be corrected. My sense was that the painting and bodywork could be a higher-impact use than the engine repair type of use. I mean, the bodywork is a lot of banging, the paint could be a lot of odors and so forth. And so, that was the sense, is that you might want to be, you might want to be more careful about controlling motor vehicle painting or bodywork and allow other uses within it that you might not want to do with motor vehicle, the motor vehicle repair or the engine repair type of thing. But I'm happy to stand corrected on that if that's not the case.
Well, bodywork is noisy, yes.
Yes.
Paint, yes, and all that. And just engine repair, to me, is something that's totally unrelated.
Just take it out altogether, do you think?
Actually, put it in the motor vehicle repair.
Painting's a big item, though, in bodywork. You need your own spray booth, you need, it's a whole different animal.
Taking out the second sentence of that, painting or bodywork, is I guess what Don's saying, maybe moving it down or combining it with motor vehicle repair. Okay? Does that make sense?
That'd make more sense to me.
Although, you're in an accident, you're repairing the engine and doing bodywork at the same time.
Yeah, I don't know whether people do it the same.
Front end or?
But I think what he was saying is that, then, fine, when they come for their approval, they would ask for both classifications, the painting being the worst one, so as long as they've got the painting.
It used to be the bodywork was the worst one because you'd use chains and big presses and this, that, and the other. Now, it's a lot more electronics, so the industry's gotten a little friendlier. But you're right, it was the paint and the bodywork that were segregated apart, that were segregated from other uses.
We almost don't care about the engine.
Right.
I don't care about my engine.
And then, as I mentioned, we became very particular, very specific under the service station because we have these really three kinds of service station. The kind that basically just sells gas and does nothing else. The kind that sells gas and does repairs, and the kind that is basically a convenience store with pumps outside. So, we're basically trying to deal with all those three different types of issues.
Did one of those include car wash, or is that a separate?
No, car wash is separate. It's the last one. You have to treat that one separate.
They can have any one of those in the car wash.
Yes.
Actually, Rick, could I ask a question? In prior versions of the zoning ordinance, something that has caused serious problems is the failure to distinguish between automobile service and truck service and truck stops.
We have that still. This, the, we haven't, we have a definition that we had previously handed out, and the reason it's not here is because we've previously handed out, but we have one for truck fueling facility and truck terminal. So, there's that.
Don?
I guess, follow-up, same question. Motor vehicle service station. I mean, to me, a service station is somebody pumping gas with a couple of bays, doing mufflers and brakes, and, you know, normal kinds of maintenance. And I don't see that in any of these definitions here, 1, 2, or 3.
There'll be 2, I think.
Motor vehicle service includes the activities and limitations of 1. Oh, and also includes motor vehicle repair. Okay, thank you. I stand corrected.
Anything else on the motor vehicle uses? Okay, the industrial uses.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Car washes, just a little hair fact here, nitpicking here. An establishment for washing, I think, should read "and/or waxing" private automobiles.
Sure. Okay. And then, under the industrial uses, there, right now, there is an industrial occupancy definition and the general manufacturing definition. They kind of overlap each other, and we have electronics manufacturing, light industry, and research and development on the next page. And so, these are just trying to break down the variety of uses that you might want to regulate in different ways because of their impacts. And trying to get away from, basically noting that electronics, there are the, I think we've discussed this before, there are five categories of hazardous, high-hazard uses in the building code. And so, electronics manufacturing can fall under a high-hazard use, particular kinds of high-hazard uses. So, if you think about it, in this case, you have research and development, and light industry are two, I'm sorry, research and development does not include any high-hazard uses, the way it's defined here. And then, we have electronics manufacturing, which could include H3 and H4, but not, or whatever, no, I'm sorry, it could include high-hazard B, which is the H3 and H4. And the light industry can only include the high-hazard A, H1 and H2. Electronics manufacturing can include the C, but not the A or B, and that's, it's a very complicated thing. And I've gone through this and tried to figure it out, but I think I've got it down now.
Tony?
It seems like it was complicated back then, and now it's still complicated. Why don't we just use the H3 and H4 rather than the categories as high-hazard A and B?
Well, it was just, it just seemed simpler to break those down into, we could say H1, H2, H3, H4. It was just kind of trying to get away from that iterative type stuff, you know, having five uses, and then four uses, and three uses.
Could a little table be included here?
Sure, yeah.
Like a matrix that would summarize that? Because it is, it's just, you know, if not A, then B, and even though I've been working with algebra all day, I can't handle this.
Right. And I think the table is nice because you can talk about explosion and flames.
We can have pictures.
This table's going to tell us what the H3 and H4 means, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, they're actually defined already in the ordinance, where they're, in previous things that we've put out, in the H, just so you know, H1 is a detonation hazard, H2 is a deflagration hazard or a hazard from accelerated burning, H3 is a combustion or physical hazard, H4 is a health hazard, and H5, basically, I think, is hazardous process materials. I think it just has to do with the electronics industry primarily.
So, is A and B, sorry, H1, H2 are A?
Yes.
H3, H4 are B, and then, H5 is C?
For command sections.
So, Rick, we are going to add a table in there?
We'll put a table in there, yes.
I think that'd be an easy way to cross-reference it.
Yeah.
S3 is training, S2 is intelligence, S1 is supply.
So, what I'll do is I'll put that table in the section of definitions that has to do with high-hazard uses, and then I'll cross-reference from the industrial sources to that. And then, we just had these two who wanted to define what personal consumer services were, and then the idea of a call center, which could be very, very high-density of employment. So, we wanted to make sure that was treated separately in the parking regulations.
Cindy?
Either a question for Bob or for you. On the call center one, is it hard to defend a large volume? Should we say something more to the effect of which primarily is there for the purpose of, you know, the phone call business?
Yeah, I mean, I think as always, the precise issue can be the better. Large volume is, I suppose, to some degree, I guess, in the eye of, or the ear of the hearer. You know, it's, we've had this, these call centers.
Right.
And some of them, although there were, weren't really all that many telephone calls, calling stations, although it was a large volume of calls, I think there was some way to tighten it up.
Right, I can't think of a great term other than, you know, which exist for the primary purpose of bothering people by phone. Something like that.
You know, and they're temporary. They all come into an office where there's just one telephone, and they set up a bank and stay for a few weeks.
And my follow-up question to that is, what about political campaign headquarters, many headquarters? Would they be call center, I mean, do we need to distinguish? I'd hate to add another definition, but we might feel.
Such as, but not limited to?
Well, I mean, we might feel okay about a temporary use that was going to be there for a month, for.
I think this is really meant to be not a temporary use, maybe we should say, clarify that it's not a temporary use.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get. I'm not worried about the political headquarters. They come, they go, they fill storefronts when they can. I'm more worried about a big operation moving in someplace where we don't want it to.
Well, what we could, you know, one thing we could do, because these tend to be, when they were actually created, they tend to be large facilities, we might say a facility over X square feet.
Yeah.
Because a political campaign, you know, a call, you know, a phone bank for United Way or something like that isn't going to be a huge thing.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
What do we base it on? Do we base it on call numbers? I mean, is that?
You can't really, I don't think we could actually do that. But I think the size, yeah, the size might be the way to do it. Floor area might be the way to do it.
So, how do we determine what's an appropriate floor size?
I'll do some more research.
Okay, great.
I've done enough research to find that, you know, some of these places really want to have one parking space per 100 square feet, which is a very high, you know, compared to, they want much more than the communities actually require in their regulations. So, it's a, it's a very, very intensive process when it's in.
And this is a use that we were approached on, too, so it's viable.
Tony, do you have a question?
Oh, wait a second, maybe, I just noticed there wasn't a comma between dry cleaning and pickup shops. So, it's, I thought that was, I was amazed that dry cleaning would be allowed under personal. So, that's.
It's dry cleaning, pickup shop.
Only.
Pickup and drop-off, yeah. Okay. Okay. Now, we go to what everybody knows is my favorite topic.
And Roger's favorite topic.
So, this is, signs are a, as I'm sure you know, a difficult thing to get your hands around. And so, I basically, if you have the list, does anybody, everybody have the list of issues that I handed out last time?
One pager, a bullet.
Six, this guy.
6508.
How do I get two of them?
Yes.
I gave you one.
I know, but I already have one.
Okay. This is basically, this is basically the kind of, the range of issues that I could see as things that might become of concern, or things we should, we should think about addressing, or things that we already addressed and may have problems with. And so, I really wanted this to be a discussion of identifying issues that you see as concerns that you've seen, or things that you think maybe the city isn't addressing as well as it could, or you're having, especially, you know, from Roger's point of view, looking from the point of view of enforcement, and what is practical to include in the regulations. So, we basically have types of signs, and you can have different types of signs regulated by district. You can regulate the number of signs by district and by the type of sign, the area of signage, the height of signs, both by district and by type of sign, the sign design. You can get, you can get into some, you can even get into, you know, not content, not, 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 what am I trying to say? In terms of content, not the meaning of it, but the way it's expressed. You know, so, for example, logos versus, or pictures versus words and that sort of thing. Different types of sign illumination, and when it can be, when signs can be illuminated, signs that can change or move, and how frequently they can change or move, and whether it's consistent, or whether it's the new technology with video displays, and temporary signs, and signs that you might want to exempt. So, that's kind of the first part of it. So, the kind of questions we have are what kinds of signs should be regulated, and we have issues with signs and equipment, people using parked equipment and so forth to advertise. There are some particular complications dealing with buildings that have several businesses in them versus buildings that have only one business in them, buildings in corner lots versus lots, buildings that only face one street, and then there's multiple buildings on one lot. So, that's kind of the range of things that I've come up with for things that we should be considering in this, and have your concerns.
I'm happy to start off, I guess. In common with, I think, everybody else who does this kind of stuff, we find sign regulation, to me, the most frustrating and complex part of zoning enforcement in particular. And it comes first off from the fact that, you know, we all know what a use is and how a table use regulation works. We all know what an area variance is, you know, and how to measure a setback. But a sign is neither a use nor an area. It's something different. Traditionally, they are regulated by zoning ordinances, and, but it creates a lot of problems. Our current system is that we define sign very broadly. Basically, anything used to attract attention is a sign. And we attempt to pervasively regulate signs, you know, size, location, illumination. And problem one comes up that because we define signs so broadly, there are frankly too many of them out there for us to get to. An example would be that a sign inside a store window is a sign. And if you go up and down Lafayette Road, for example, you will find virtually everywhere what are technically signs inside a window, which do not have permits from us, and which would certainly exceed the amount of signage allowed by measuring the size of the building. And, you know, in connection with all these kinds of signs, neither our reach nor our grasp is enough. Can't get to them ever. And consequently, that part of the zoning ordinance is frankly not well-enforced. And I think most of us agree that if you have a law which you can't enforce, you want to maybe rethink whether you should have that law.
Piggybacking on what you're saying, when you're talking about. Piggybacking on what you're saying, when you're talking about signs that are inside the window that are in fact a sign, that were always a thorn in the side of the historic district commission, were internally illuminated, well, were really signs inside of the windows to get around internally illuminated signage regulations in the district? If you get what I'm saying?
Another example that I, clearly the definition of signs as it is right now is a Coke machine or a Pepsi machine is a sign, it's a three foot by six foot, eighteen square foot sign, and it's, you know, I'm not sure how well that's, how well or if you regulate that at this point, but that's, that would clearly fall under the definition of sign in your current ordinance.
Don?
Would it be useful to work backwards from absolutely, we are not gonna have any of this, and work backwards from there, let me give you an example, video signs, right, and I used in our earlier conversation, as you drive on 293 in Manchester, you get off of 93 and you're going over towards the old Jordan Marsh over in there, just before you hit Willow Street, there's a huge sign that looks like a Jumbotron, and it's got like Joe's furniture, and then it changes to somebody else, and all, I mean, I'm going, oh, really? You see cars literally drifting across the road, it's not only visually assaulting, but I think it's a, it presents a hazard to traffic, and it takes attention away from what you should be doing, which is watching the road, so I guess I would say, would it be beneficial, or would it, is it even possible to say, we will not have these kinds of signs, unless, of course, the board finds these signs attractive and likes them, and in this case, I'd be in the minority.
Well, I can offer both, some local history and some state law that has a direct bearing on that, I wanna say, five years ago, we had a pier on Lafayette Road in three locations, all of them automobile dealerships, signs which moved and flashed, in spite of the fact that our ordinance at that time said that signs in the city should not move or flash, except time and temperature. First Amendment, you know, the nutshell First Amendment issue with signs is that there is, signs are expressive conduct, and there is some level of First Amendment protection for signs, but municipalities nonetheless retain the authority to, to regulate signs as long as the regulations are content neutral, that's gonna be the big one when I get to our cases, and reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions that are narrowly tailored to accomplish a governmental purpose, that's the test to our sign regulations. Now, back in the days of those car dealership signs that I mentioned, our ordinance allowed time and temperature, but did not allow 1998 Ford Taurus, and that turned out to be the weakness, because we allowed time and temperature, did not allow Ford Taurus, our ordinance was not at that time content neutral, and it caused a lot of problems with us in our lawsuits, and frankly, it caused us to settle them on less favorable terms than we would have liked to. However, immediately thereafter, we deleted from our ordinance the provision that allowed time and temperature signs, so that our ordinance, which basically says no moving and flashing signs, is content neutral. There, after that, in the last year and a half, there's been some cases in both the federal district court and in the New Hampshire Supreme Court, which have said this, they've said that municipalities can regulate signs, notwithstanding the First Amendment protection as long as, as I said, content neutral, reasonable time, place, and manner, narrowly tailored, and the cases have had one more important thing, the cases have said that protection of aesthetics and protection of traffic safety are two legitimate governmental purposes for which the sign regulation can occur, so a sign which drew a driver's eyes off the road, like you just described, that is clearly something we can regulate, and, and a plethora of signs that was gonna make Lafayette Road in Portsmouth look like Route One in Saugus, I think we can regulate those too, under the aesthetic basis that the court said we can do it, so I think that all amounts to an answer to your question.
Yes or no?
Yes.
I script. So, yes, okay, we can, so we can all agree, no Jumbotron kind of signs?
But, but Bob, when you, when you say, I mean, I've got a daughter that's fifteen and a half that's on, and we get on Lafayette Road, and it's, it's the flashing, the, I mean, it's enough for me to drive me batty, let alone, so, to me, that is a traffic hazard, it's a safety, how do we, what do we do with that?
Well, but for the three automobile dealerships that have got those moving signs, we can stop that right now, and I think we have stopped it now, and.
But those temporary ones that waved, look like, you know, the.
That's not supposed to be happening.
All the banners?
Yeah, the.
Banners, yeah. They're not lit, but they just.
They just flap, and they wave, and they shine, and they.
Moving and flashing.
So.
Your attention.
Tony?
Does the same rule apply with this, as it does the rest of the ordinance where it's permissive?
Yes.
So getting back to Don's question of trying to say things we don't want, isn't really the way we wanna go?
It's harder to, it doesn't fit the normal plan of the ordinance, but you know, this goes right back to, gee, signs aren't uses, you know, signs aren't dimensional, you know.
And then what happens when someone wants to do something that's not in here, do they go before the BOA?
They can.
It's not a use variance, it's not a, it's not an area variance, what do they?
You know, we have actually kind of struggled with that exact question, and, you know, I don't know that there's a good answer, my feeling is, it's use, it's closer to use than area, the higher standard for the variance.
I'm not sure this is what you're asking, though, if, if a particular type, what we might think of as a type of sign, well, I guess anything that attracts attention is a sign, so if it's a sign, and it's not specifically defined in the ordinance, then is it a prohibited sign? So, and is the question then, if, should we, should we be silent on video displays because?
No.
No, okay, so we should prohibit them?
Even though everything you said is correct, and even though everything you said is correct, and even though it's a permissive ordinance, you, I am absolutely certain that you wanna ban the Jumbotrons.
Okay.
Cindy, do you have a comment?
I think we might wanna look at signs differently in different parts of town, I mean, not every single part of town, but I do think, you know, as John is saying, the Route One is completely different than other parts of the city, and downtown is completely different, particularly, I'll just give the example, you know, the gasoline canopy things, where they're the color, you know, our logo color is green or red, so you have this canopy that's this thick, and they've got it all colored, and then it runs into the word that is the station name, I don't really care so much about that if it's down Route One, but I do care if an enterprise downtown, and we, this has come up, has said, we wanna paint a, I'll just use, you know, a bright pink stripe all the way around our building, and have it come back to the name of our business, I mean, that's an issue that came up, and that's something we wouldn't want, and it's something, you know, since HTC can't regulate color, then I think we might wanna look at regulating that as a sign, I would wanna call that a sign, so we could prevent it.
And actually, one of the things that I was going to suggest that we might consider in that regard is looking at the downtown overlay district, perhaps, because it could be the historic district, but it could also be the downtown overlay district, because one of the things that I can see, again, in terms of having so many things that you regulate that you, that you can't even touch them, are paper menus outside restaurants, and that sort of thing, you know, to a certain extent, you may not care, you know, and if it's, if it's something that encourages people to be walking around the downtown and looking at restaurants and so forth, that may be a good thing, so you might want in the downtown overlay district, which is designed for pedestrian movement, you may wanna have a separate set of regulations where you allow those things, where you don't allow paper window signs in other parts of the city, and that's, that's one thing, and I think, I was, I was just looking, I think it's Savannah that has a historic, a downtown, historic downtown, historic district sign ordinance, looked like it might be a good thing to investigate a little bit further.
And just to follow up on it, you know, the fluttering signs that Dunkin' Donuts puts out, and, you know, I agree, you see this movement, and you think something's gonna run in front of you, you don't know what it is out of the corner of your eye, those are a problem on the Route One area, but by the same token, you see in downtown sometimes kind of that, the branding of the street where a segment of a block is trying to look like it's all together, and they'll have some type of banner, which could be defined the same as those Dunkin' Donuts things, but I like them downtown in the right setting, so, you know, it's just another example of someplace where a fluttering type banner thing may make sense one place, but not another.
You get a different, different traffic pattern as well downtown that you do on Lafayette Road.
Right, people are going slow, they're on their feet more.
Right, so, Don, you had a comment?
Just a couple of things, if I, and this happened in our building, in the Macintosh, where we have canopies over the entrance of 80 and 90, and one of the canopies was damaged in a storm, and it was torn, so we had to replace it, and when we started to replace it, there was a second floor hairdresser that's up there in Terramagra, and he said, well, why can't I just put my name on the side of the, on the side of the canopy, which is the entrance to his business, and I don't have any problem with that, but apparently the city did, because then it became a sign, because it, it's, I guess, technically a sign, so the question is, if I have a sign that I wanna put up, just so I can understand this, what, what do I do, where, who do I go to, is there like a permitting process for signage?
Yes, and maybe Roger would like to.
By the way, Roger, I called you back, so.
One of the, one of the, one of the problems in the downtown area is the current ordinance regulates businesses above the first floor, maybe it's called businesses above the street level, anyway, second floor businesses are regulated differently than first floor businesses, and with a building like the Macintosh, or many of the buildings downtown that are long buildings with multiple entrances, the ordinance says that all of the second floor businesses have to have their signs on one bracket, so if your business has an entrance down there, and my business has an entrance down there, and we're up on the second floor, the signs have to be in the same bracket, they can't be above the doors that entrance, that enter the second floor, I perceive that as a problem. The regulation also only allows second floor businesses to have a two, two square feet of signage, which isn't much, one by two.
Yeah.
That's always a shock to somebody moving into a second floor business, but the, but the big shock is that all of the signs for the second floor businesses are supposed to be on the same bracket, they can't be over the door that accesses the second floor.
And the regular process, Roger, is they, they come to you?
They come to us, they apply for a permit, and we issue it, you know, I mean, if it, if it meets the regulation, we issue it, if it doesn't meet the regulation, we send them to the BOA. The other issue I see downtown, taking it one step further, although nobody asked me to.
You go.
Was that, like the Macintosh building, like the new Eagle building, the sign ordinance regulates signage per lot, so if you've got a huge building that is all one lot, you are limited to the amount of signage you can have on that lot by the ordinance, if you've got, and let's go down Market Street, little tiny buildings all on separate lots, your allowed amount of signage greater than a big building on one lot would be allowed, and if the ordinance is written with respect to how a visitor to our city views the streetscape, a visitor to our city doesn't know where the lot lines are, they don't know that the Macintosh building is one lot, they don't know that the Eagle building is one lot, or you know, it looks like three buildings, they perceive these buildings as separate buildings, yet the ordinance addresses, addresses the signage allowable by where the lot lines are. Period.
That's informative. Rick, we talked about it earlier, where, you know those spotlights that you can see from fifty miles away? Is it, would that be considered a sign?
The ones that project, project the image or project words?
You know, the moon, and then you can see Venus, and.
The beam, the light beam.
Yeah, the light beam, Don's friend that's got the World War II.
The World War II searchlights.
Yeah.
Oh, searchlights, yeah.
Does it attract attention?
I think we were, I think we were saying that they didn't fall under, we were treating them last time under the, the light, light outdoor lighting section.
So not a sign?
Not a sign, but regulated under that, I mean, I suppose you could say that it's, I don't know.
That's close, you could slice. That's very fine.
I got a, I got a shiitake knife.
You aim that light at the side of the building, so that it lit up the side of the building, that is clearly a sign, attract attention to that building.
Well, and.
But, can I just finish?
Yes.
If you aim it at the clouds, clouds aren't buildings, clouds aren't lights in the city, and we don't really regulate the clouds. Yet. Build a new ordinance. So, so you could, you know, these could be very tough little questions, now, in addition, usually they put those things, the machinery, like in a parking lot, or in a street, or away from the building, so if they were, if they are signs, how would you calculate, you know, how much of the building space they're taking, I mean, you could just go around and around and around with the.
But the sign area could be like two feet wide by seven miles long.
Those are, those are annoying, those are, those bring attention, again, you.
I thought we excluded them, we just told them no.
Well, I thought that was done away with.
I think they're dealt with under the lighting.
Well, we have a, we have a thing in the sign ordinance called a special event sign, and you can display a special event sign for seven days every calendar quarter, and you can't not display it this quarter and roll it over to the next quarter, but the special event signs are over and above all of the square footage allowed by the ordinance, so if you are maxed out on your signage, and you wanna display something for seven days per calendar quarter, you can apply for a permit to do that, and we don't care how big it is, the ordinance doesn't regulate how big it is, it's called a special event sign.
What, do you know what the genesis of that was, Rick?
I have no idea.
Does it get used much?
It gets used quite a bit, Cindy.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't think Roger and Bob are aware, the last time we met, the, we were, in our, in our lighting ordinance, we've now come as a group, decided that we would not allow those, does that supersede the sign ordinance?
I wasn't, right, I wasn't here at the last meeting.
We were actually, you mean the spotlight techs?
Yes.
They were not, we weren't saying that the spotlight itself, you know, the device itself wasn't, we were basically talking about the impact of bright light, so it wasn't, it wasn't treating it as an advertising device, as much as it was treating a light that was directed upwards, which is prohibited, so that's, that's basically what's happening, is we're prohibiting a light from being directed upward, but that doesn't affect what Roger's talking about, which is a special event sign, which doesn't need to be a spotlight, it could be anything, so I think that the, what we've said is, a spotlight, regardless of whether it's a sign, and a spotlight could be a sign or it could not be a sign, it could be, it could be something for.
Directed the clouds.
Community, yeah, right, it could be a community event or something like that, that isn't directed at something toward a particular business or product or service, which is what a sign, how a sign is sort of defined as, that, in that case, it would be, it wouldn't, it may not qualify as a sign, but it would still be addressed under lighting requirements.
My point being, it's kind of a silly discussion, because we were saying they're not allowed.
Well, I think, yeah, man, but I think that Roger has raised another good point, and that's, which is a separate point.
Separate issue.
Yeah, okay, and I think, and the, the.
Special event signs.
Yeah, the special, the special event sign is not, specifically says, it's not limited to size, I mean, doesn't, doesn't, it's not that it's silent about it, it says you've got unlimited size, so that's a really interesting.
I think one of the reasons it was done that way, though, was to try to avoid to interfere too much with business, but to put a limit on it, and I think the gestation of it came out when they began to do the mannequins, the gorillas, the clowns, this, that, and the other, so that we didn't have to go out and try to wrestle a big gorilla into Jason's vehicle and bring it back to City Hall, and have a ten-foot tall gorilla standing around, the idea was that you could do it for seven days, and you had to get rid of it.
But you actually can do that, so you can do one of those in, not just ten foot, but twenty foot tall, inflatable things at Wendy's or something like that, and that's allowed.
The one I've been waiting for is the Goodyear Blimp coming by and tying onto a property, now what do you do?
Wait seven days, Tony?
Yeah, I kinda like the special event idea, but I also wish there was some control over it, more than there is now, to me, it seems like if the city council is, is concerning themselves with A-frame, every single A-frame sign, that perhaps this is, falls under that category, you know, special event, you know, have the city council approve it, or the city manager.
But the A-frame signs are concerned because they're in the public right-of-way.
Right, on city property.
Yeah.
The sign ordinance is not involved with signs on public property. It's involved totally with signs on private property.
The issue you're really dealing with is, to what extent do you need to regulate commercial enterprises more than likely on commercial property? If you decide that you need to know everything, then we've got to hire a lot of inspectors to go out. If you're willing to let there be some controlled chaos over short periods of time, and try to keep some upper limits on it, and basically a little more laissez-faire, then it'll function. The problem that we have at the moment, which is what Bob is saying, is the regulatory atmosphere, because we are trying to be strict, is what's driving it a little too far. So, you have, I think you have to have a balance. I don't want to chase gorillas all over the city just to get them down, you know, when you could send a sign, say, "Okay, after a week, you got to take it down, and then we'll take it." That works a little better, for example.
What about the kind of pedestrian-oriented, not necessarily A-frame, but menus, menu board, I mean, literally menus outside restaurants, whether they're temporary, pasted inside a window, or mounted within a frame next to the doorway, and that sort of thing? Are those, do we agree that those are the kinds of things we're not concerned about, or are there ways we should be concerned about those?
That's a total waste of everybody's time. I mean, it's inside on private property. The reach of the city goes through that piece of glass. I don't think the city should be reaching in through that window. And menus, and, you know, sale forty percent off, you know, things like that.
Since you said that, actually, it's different. I was going to suggest something else. I have seen ordinances that say, exempt from this, or signs that are not legible from more than three feet away. So, you know, if you said something like that, as a general rule, you can't see it.
Menus and stuff have never been...
That would take care of the menus. But what about the, then it doesn't take care of the big red sign.
You know, it seems to me, just logically, that if I own a store downtown, and I want to have a sale, I should be able to stick a sign up in my window that says, "Sale forty percent off," and not have the city come down on me. I mean, that just seems...
Seven days, seven days every quarter.
No, that's not a special...
Or within three feet.
What's that? Within what?
Or within three feet.
Yeah, well, I mean, is that...
That just, that to me seems like over-regulating. It really does.
But what if it's there, you know, three hundred sixty-five days a year?
It's not a real sale.
Well, how do you, how do you, how do you determine that?
Oh, that's an easy line to pick.
Actually, Roger...
I guess I'll just say to Don, balance that against the Mojo's BBQ store on Islington Street, and all the plastic window, plastic graphics glued on his window. At what point do you say that something stuck on a window, or inside a window, is not a sign? You just need to...
I'm not saying it is or isn't a sign. I'm just saying, at what point are you starting to over-regulate things?
When it becomes permanent.
Well, all I'm getting at is, you've got a storefront that is papered with plastic glue-on letters, I guess, for lack of a better term. And, I mean, it's a thirty-foot-by-ten-foot sign, in my opinion, that's on the glass. Maybe it's on the inside, maybe it's on the outside, I don't know. I haven't gone up to look at it. I don't dispute that a menu, an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven menu, papered inside a storefront, is not a sign. But Rick needs to find a way to say what is and what is not a sign.
Or what is a sign that we allow all the time, and what is a sign that we want to regulate or prohibit.
It's the extremes that will drive the whole thing.
I like that viewable distance. You know, I think that's a good...
Counselor Dwyer?
I don't think that's compatible, though, with the basic definition that Bob said that we're defining a sign as. So, if, I mean, the difference between a piece of paper and a mannequin, or whatever, I mean, if it's anything used to attract attention, then it doesn't seem to hold up to me to make that distinction between...
Well, the ordinance goes a little further. Bob had a good summary, but, for example, window displays of materials are not a sign. And actually, the operative word in it is, any representation that is illuminated and consisting wholly and part of written words or symbols is a sign.
And I think also, it can keep in mind the distinction between what we're defining as a sign, and what signs we're allowing and where. So, even though we might be including all of this in the definition of a sign, then we go on to say which signs we allow and where, and how big. So, that we would define that menu outside the restaurant as a sign, and then in the regulation, we would say, "This is among the signs that are allowed without a permit." See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's not that it's a contradiction so much as we're saying we're being inclusive about what we define as a sign, and then we're being, we're progressively narrowing what we want to regulate.
Paige?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think the concept of viewable distance could be a nice way for us to think about this, in terms of approaching it from a district standpoint. So, we could have one, maybe somewhat looser-than-current, city-wide approach, and then, let's say, you know, a downtown overlay, you know, and then, let's say, something like for the Route One area, that type of place, the viewable distance is going to be totally different if you're traveling in a vehicle at X miles per hour versus walking downtown. So, that's why, I think, in my mind, the within-three-feet makes sense in a pedestrian area, and in an area where we're trying to encourage pedestrian action, you know?
And I should, since you bring up the idea of traveling in a vehicle and so forth, a lot of ordinances that I've looked at regulate sign area by the posted speed on the street. I mean, it's kind of difficult to do, because you've got two different, especially when you've got a state agency doing regulations versus a city agency doing regulations. But some say, you know, posted speed of thirty to forty miles per hour, you've got this set of regulations, posted speed of twenty to thirty miles, and now you've got another, because it basically, that's exactly what they're saying. If you're going slower, then you don't need the sign to be quite as big, you don't need quite as many of them, because you're kind of cruising along. Whereas if you're on a, you know, a fifty-mile-speed limit, you know, on a rural highway, then you can have maybe a bigger sign or something just to catch you as you go by.
Don?
Just so I can understand this, given our current regulations, I just had a flash on walking by the River Run Bookstore, where they have books just inside the window, standing up. I guess, based on what we've been saying, that's a sign.
No.
No.
Goods for sale, like a jewelry store, or a bookstore, or a shoe store, goods for sale are not a sign.
Okay.
It's words.
By contrast, Springer's, for example, the jewelry store, took a very large and a very attractive photograph of a woman wearing expensive jewelry, and put that in the window. That was a sign measured by its length and width.
And that was words and representations and illuminated.
But, but here's, if this one, this one would come into power, because...
But, wait, there's more.
It says, "Window displays comprising of merchandise, figurines, mannequins, decorations, and other similar articles arranged inside a building should not be considered a sign." What's the difference between a picture of a woman and a mannequin of a woman? You know, that's kind of, that's where it gets really fuzzy.
Exactly. They're both representations. I mean, that word doesn't work.
Tony, and then Cindy.
To help confuse the issue, how about, which was a sign on our own? Bulma's music has, you know, album covers and things like that plastered all over that aren't the goods.
Right, and if those albums are something they're selling inside, they're okay. It's not a sign. If they're like antique albums that aren't being sold, they just stuck them up there to attract attention, they are a sign. So, you'll have to go in and say, "I want to buy that."
But it's not the product. It's a poster of the product. I mean, it's not...
Then it's a sign.
Then it's a sign.
It's not like they take the album and stick it there.
Cindy?
What I'd like to avoid, which we haven't seen here yet, but there's a lot of in Concord now, near the new mall development, is these huge box stores, and they have this huge, ugly outside sign that is a quarter to a half of the outside building, and it's somebody playing sports, if it's blank sporting goods, or it's a big diamond, if it's a jeweler, and they're hideous. Those I'd really like to avoid in this town, a lot. And I...
I think we have that. I mean, I think that is...
What do you call that?
That would fall under a representation includes written words or symbols, that...
I don't know. What do you think, Attorney Bob?
These are tough issues. Painting Home Depot orange might make the whole building a sign.
Right, right. And I have another question, which is, back to the speed limit issue. One part of me thinks that's a good approach. If you're in a higher-speed corridor, like Route One, then you should be allowed more signage to attract people to your store. But is there a way to regulate, "Yeah, I'll give you a bigger sign, but I don't want three million words on it. I want just a couple of words"? Can you, is that back to regulating content?
Yes. Plus, I have a problem myself with the speed limit sign, which is, I think it's illogical. If you're going sixty miles an hour, you can have a big sign that takes a long time to read, but if you're creeping through Market Square at three miles an hour, you can't have a sign that takes time to read. I don't think it holds together as a matter of logic.
I'm thinking more of, you know, I wouldn't care so much if you had a small sign like this downtown, but down on Route One, you had a big sign, but if you had the same number of words on it, like just one simple thing, one word. But they pack them with words, which is what makes them just as distracting at any speed.
The only two absolute sure bases we know to regulate these things from the cases are safety and aesthetics. Now, is it less safe, or more safe, if you're going seventy miles an hour, to look at a bigger sign? I think it's less safe. You're going faster. Then...
They have done studies of font size.
That's more what I'm getting at, not sign size, but font size.
Yeah, so it's possible to, I'll do some more research on that.
I mean, it's almost like a minimum font size, if you're in a higher-speed corridor, not a maximum font size.
Right.
Don?
And then they have their X amount of square foot of sign, but it's filled with less words that are a bigger letter. Sorry, Don.
Yeah, words, any discussion of words starts to sound like a problem. You know, we shouldn't be looking at words. Content, content. I guess I'm just, I'm not feeling like we're getting anywhere. So, I'd like to go back and focus on that one thing that we might be able to make a little progress on, and then the wheels can fall off again, and we can go wherever we go. But the LEDs, the videos, the Jumbotrons, can we just out-and-out ban them? Period. Yeah, I think so. Actually, there's a Concord ordinance which pretty much out-and-out bans them, and has been upheld. Okay, let's do it. Put that in the notes.
With one, I think that the distinction is, one distinction is moving versus non-moving, because it might get very difficult to regulate the specific technology for an illuminated sign, LED versus an incandescent bulb versus fluorescent bulb versus, you know, that sort of thing. But I think the first thing, the first thing you're talking about, I think, is the whole idea of moving and changeable and that kind of...
Not even moving. And I'll tell you another one. In Nashua, I saw one where you drove past, you go down 101 towards Milford, and there's a real estate office, and they have, you know, Silver Lake, Hollis, 199.9, you know, two bedrooms, and then it changes ten seconds later to something else on Lake Natticook, and...
Changeable message, right, yeah.
Yeah, it's a Jumbotron is basically what it is, and it's terrible. And I see no valid use for those whatsoever.
Again, remember, all these regulations are working together. So, we've got the number of signs, the size of the sign, and the illumination of the sign, and then we can control the changeable message. All of those things can work together. I think that with, you know, careful tuning, we can probably come up with an area thing that makes sure it's not a Jumbotron, but it might be a Minutron, and then we have something where we kind of regulate the frequency.
But I'm proposing that you do, you ban the technology, period. And I don't care whether it's little, whether it's big.
How about gas station prices? Do you want to prohibit them from changing electronically?
Yes, they can't go any higher.
You're right.
Prohibit them from changing electronically.
See, I don't see that as a...
We don't have them now.
But they, but they do it.
They do.
But they don't change constantly. They're not a moving sign.
No, but they're changing. It's a changing message, and so the question is, how, would you care if it changed? I mean, he was saying you don't want to have that technology at all, if it changed only once a day, or something like that.
But you wouldn't be putting your gasoline prices on a Jumbotron, or on an LED?
Oh, yes.
LEDs, definitely.
Northwood, right, Northwood, yeah.
Hampton.
Tony, you have?
All right, then maybe LED is not the right term. We'll stick with the generic term Jumbotron.
Let's just talk about changeable, just talk about the changeable sign. Forget about the Jumbotron, because in Portsmouth, they're not going to be jumbo to begin with, because we're going to have the size down. But the, it's the changeable message, I think, is what we're, the changeable, something changeable about the sign, something that varies from one time to another.
Do you want to say three changes a day, or something? I mean, I know what Don's getting at, but if they're going to change the price of the gas, they're going to probably do it once a day.
Right.
Well, at least not now, but...
Is there any reason to do it more than once a day?
No, if it is, it's a changeable sign.
Well, how many times are you going to, I mean, aesthetically, we're talking about aesthetics here, basically, a look.
Yeah, I think...
And safety, and safety.
And safety, okay. So, if a sign were to change every hour, I'm trying to be flexible here, it's not going to make a whole lot of difference, I don't think, to the aesthetics, because you're not going to be going back and forth by a place every hour, pretty much. If you are, then you're in the bus driver or something, or moving around. So, I mean, I think a one-hour period, to me, allows somebody the freedom and flexibility to change the message on their sign without making it be obnoxious.
Tony, you had a comment?
I don't know why we're allowing these signs. I mean, I think they're hideous. I mean, I would go to the extreme of not having any internally illuminated signs in the city. Why not? I mean, we like it downtown. I personally like it downtown. I like it when I drive through other cities that have that ordinance in Maine. You drive along Route One, you can tell. When you come into a classy town, they don't allow it. I don't know. Why are we allowing it? Why is it...
When you say internally illuminated, you're talking about both the plastic sign with the bulb in sign, but also about the individual bulbs that would be like a gas station price and that kind of thing?
Neon.
Well, neon, a third way, yeah. I mean, neon sometime is classy, but I guess, you know, I guess the question about spelling out a message with little bulbs, is that, you're including that in your definition as well?
I want, I like it when the light is reflected on the object, from a different source, from the outside.
And that kind of takes care of the issues of changeable signs, because the good old days, when they had that long stick and the little felt letters stuck up there.
It's just welcoming. I mean, it's really...
Scoreboards.
I don't see how a bulb that is very visible in a city that has gone to great lengths to try to preserve a certain character adds anything anywhere, when every other community is trying to reduce it. Why are we suddenly trying to allow it?
I'm not saying I'm trying to allow it. I'm thinking right now, you may allow it.
Yeah.
You're agreeing with Tony.
Yeah.
We didn't like it when near Europh's building, the sign was up recently over on Market Street, where everybody on the board seemed to say, you know, "We don't like this internally illuminated sign."
Yeah, Portsmouth Boulevard.
Portsmouth Boulevard, thank you.
Bob, does that open us up to anything?
Well, I think we've kind of come around full circle, and I'm sort of back where Cindy was a while ago, saying, "Hey, the downtown is different than Route One and Woodbury Avenue." And maybe the logical sign regulation is, the closer you get to Market Square, the more intensely we regulate, you know, the smaller the size, the less the lights, et cetera, et cetera. The farther out you get, the less we'll be concerned.
I think the ordinance pretty much does that right now.
Well, the one example where it clearly doesn't is the signs in the windows. That's right.
True, true.
Although, if that, if the Portsmouth Boulevard sign wasn't in our right-of-way, could they have had an internally illuminated sign there? Because that's actually OR, isn't it?
It would be an office park identification sign. I think it would have to be a monument sign.
Yeah.
One of the things I often hear, though, is people complaining that we value the downtown so much more than the neighborhoods, the other areas of the city. And I tend to agree with them. Why don't we put some more value on that?
So, right now, just for context, right now, the ordinance says, "All signs except signs in a residential district or temporary real estate and contractor signs may be illuminated either internally or externally, except as otherwise prohibited by this ordinance." It's a pretty broad statement, so...
What about if you take the internally illuminated piece off that? How does it read?
Well, you could say, "All signs except signs in a residential district or temporary real estate and contractor signs may be illuminated externally." I mean, is that, you know, I'd probably turn that around. But is that, that's where you're heading, in terms of your kind of consensus here?
Cindy?
Removing real estate, too. I think that's, don't you, John?
What's that?
Removing real estate signs.
Well, there aren't any in Portsmouth and I'm aware. But you're opening up a huge...
There are a lot downtown for offices.
What about the signage that already exists? Is that all grandfathered at this point?
What about the signage that already exists, is that all grandfathered at this point?
If they're there, they're there, yeah.
Sure, I think Cindy had a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I generally agree with you, Tommy, my, my, I'm just trying to think through, say we have a major redevelopment of Southgate Plaza, or say the Super Walmart hadn't been built yet, people still need to know they're there, and I'm trying to think, are we better off with a smaller illuminated sign that draws people's attention to Walmart or Southgate, or is it going to end up being a bigger sign with bloodlights up on it if it's externally illuminated? I, I don't know, I'm just trying to think through those things, that there may be situations where it's better as a, as an aesthetic thing and as a public thing to have internal illumination in some case, I just want to think that's right, I generally agree with you, and David, but I, I just want to think about that a little more.
Well, is that something we want to look at, different areas? I mean, I don't want to pay more attention to downtown, but Lafayette Road, maybe have it, streets over fifty miles an hour have a certain character of sign, and, I mean, is that something that, you know...
Or lots with development over a certain amount of square footage, get some other considerations.
Right, I mean, is that something that Rick, that you could, I, I think we need to, we need to maybe massage this a little bit, because I think we're just spinning our wheels here, but...
Just an idea to that, how about, how about, or, or signs approved through a site review process?
Then we got to do our own standards, so you're going to be into the same thing right now.
Last government, Counselor Dwyer and then Cindy.
Given the discussion about speed limits though, I'm not sure the criteria is a speed limit, I do think there is something related to the corridors, picking up on what Cindy said, because, you know, I certainly agree with the downtown being different than others, but I also think our corridors, we, we really need to be thinking about what we want along those, and I don't think it's a speed issue as much as it is an, an aesthetic issue, so I would argue against the internally illuminating, because that...
Anyway.
I would. Partly just because it, it lends itself to a kind of scale, you know, and I don't think we want to say, you can do internally, internally illuminated if it's this scale, but you can't if it's that scale, I think it gets too complicated, I think it lends itself to a kind of scale that then really junks up the transit corridors. You, and we're, we're trying to slow traffic on those anyway, so the idea of having to not go as fast in order to read the signs, I don't think is a bad idea.
Just one quick comment that, I think this is a very good discussion, it's, it's messy because it is this very complex issue, I think this is really raising some good issues, so it's, this isn't meant to be a linear process, these are like, we're at like the food for thought stage here, and, you know, Rick will get to take all this, and, and he's already talked a lot with the people that administer the sign ordinance, so it's a good discussion.
In terms, in terms of illumination, there is this, I've heard good and bad things about it, I heard some bad things about it today, what is called halo lighting, and if you know what that is, and who was, who was, I was talking with about it today?
Coldwell Banker on Maplewood.
We, we, right, we've got the, we've got a light. But, I mean, sometimes, sometimes it's extremely elegant, it was just, it's really interesting, you look at some of these places where it's very, it's done very elegantly, and I haven't, you know, I've got to go over here and look at night sometime.
Thank you, Rick.
Can you educate us on what halo lighting is?
Halo lighting is where you, where the, the, internal illumination is where the light bulb is behind something that's translucent and shines through, that's what, that's what internal illumination is.
They take, they take something...
I was going to make all the distinctions.
They take something known as a channel letter. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a C-shaped metal thing that forms a letter, let's say the letter D. And they put a piece of neon inside of it, so it lights up the brick behind the letter. You can't see the neon, but it lights up the wall behind the letter.
Push the letters off the building.
So light, the light is not visible.
Letter standoff.
It's not, it is not external, it is not external illuminate, it is not, it's not external, it's not internal illumination, it's not...
Oh, oh, I've been told to this.
It looks a lot like if you aim a searchlight at the side of the building.
It's something that we...
Seriously, the former Shains Law Office on the Maplewood Avenue sign is a perfect example of what we're talking about.
And it's something that's not defined in the zoning, so, from my point of view, it's not defined, because, because internal to me is, you're shining through something, external is, it says you're directing, directing light onto the sign, and this is neither, it's, it's behind the sign directing onto the building.
Well, Bob's going to take you out and beat you after this meeting.
Seems to me that, that internal illumination means the light is from the inside of the sign.
Right.
But the way this reads, you have external, you have halo under external.
Yep. Well, yeah, but it's, 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 I'm, I'm using that in terms of the definition that is typically used for external, directed onto the sign.
Halo is a particular problem for us, because most of our sign regulations require that the sign area be measured. And if you look at a halo sign, the words are actually a silhouette, a darkened silhouette, and what attracts your attention is the halo.
The area around it, so that would be, that would be the area of the sign.
Had to measure.
Yeah, that would be, that would be the...
X nail on the halo head.
Well, yes and no, I mean, if you, if you define that as the area of the sign, that would be, that, that's true, that would be the area of the sign that you would count as part of the area of the sign, because that's the area that attracts your attention. So, so you can say, you would actually make the letters smaller if you allowed, if you allowed halo lighting, because you, the letters would have to be smaller because the light would surround it. So, Counselor Dwyer?
Well, this is one where I would, if, if people thought we, I wouldn't allow it in the downtown. I can see the potential for this kind of lighting in an industrial area, in a peas-like area, in a...
Office park?
Office park area, but I would not allow it in the downtown.
I was thinking Stratton, Greenland.
Scranton, Zebro.
Tony?
I'm not afraid if we accidentally don't allow it somewhere. I mean, probably nine out of ten times, it's a sign we wouldn't want, but, you know...
Well, I mean, maybe the usage, you know, industrial, I mean, make it...
Office park.
Yeah, I mean, something like that, I would, that's a good point.
That's appropriate.
I mean, I think what, we have a, I mean, the, the, Coldwell is an egregious example, it's got like everything wrong with it that you'd ever want aesthetically, but I think the idea of doing something like this on an office research building in smaller letters that are made of a material that's an attractive material and then illuminated would be much more attractive than most signs that we see. So, I, I, you know, I understand it's a problem, but we're going from a bad example there, I think. It's size, it's plastic, it's downtown.
Well, that falls under aesthetics, right?
Right, it's on a building that shouldn't be illuminated, you know, it's got all those problems.
Which leads me to my question is, I, I drive by that, walk by that building a thousand times, I don't think I've ever noticed a sign, I mean...
You can get glasses.
You must be blinded by your spotlight.
I think, I, I don't think that passes a three-foot test on it. Put the glasses on there and we'll...
Actually, the problem is, I'm asleep by dark, so I haven't seen it.
Rick, does it make sense that we, I mean, it seems like we, we've kicked it around, does it make sense?
I've got some ideas, I, I'm trying to think if there are other things that we wanted to talk about. What about, I guess the other question that Cindy has talked about, I guess, I guess it also relates particularly to this building, but thinking about this building and thinking about gas station canopies, you know, which, if you, if you're using large stripes around a gas station canopy, you know, if you've got a yellow and red stripe around a canopy, you know you're going to a shell station, so clearly that's a sign. So do you, I mean, according to the ordinance, you would, you'd measure that whole thing in the sign area, because there's a combination of colors and images and so, so forth that draws attention to a product or a business. Is that the kind of thing that you want to include? Do you want to include that, that type of thing? And if you do, do you want to include it in all districts, do you want to include it in, exclude it, you know, address it, prohibit it in the downtown, allow it in the outside, so forth?
They don't bother me when they're, when they're non-illuminated, because when I drive by at night, I don't see it.
So, so...
That, that's just my opinion, just my opinion on that, but...
It would be...
I'll, I'll go Don and then John.
I mean, I think of Irving, Blue Canoe, the colors, that to me is not offensive, I mean, it's, it seems like we're overreaching here and over-regulating.
I'm, I'm just asking the question, do you, because right now, according to your ordinance, I think you regulate it, you may not be enforcing it, but I think you regulate it.
I would respectfully disagree with that, because, I mean, Irving, Home Depot, orange, I mean, you, you could make the argument, which I think is a silly argument to make, that a color is not a sign. Letters, well, that's why Bob said frustrating and complex, that was his description early on.
So, John, you had a comment?
Well, yeah, I think when colors are institutional and part of the sign, they take away from the special character of certain districts, such as the historic district, and I can think of a certain gas station on Islington Street that was a, that came before us and was something that we just, we hadn't ever had to deal with a gas station before. How, how do you make a gas station fit in with character? And we, later on in studies, quite by accident, discovered that you could have a gas station that actually was contributing and had character, that gas station no longer exists, but, you know, that, that institutional banning and so forth is something that would give teeth to the ordinance to have that banned, to have some kind of language banning that, or, or giving the commission flexibility, or something like that.
Just within the historic district?
Well, it's just, well, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the district right now, I'm thinking it's kind of draconian to ban that all over town in the hinterlands, much as I would like to see the Route One character corridor had more attention paid to it, I just think it's a draconian move to ban it in the outskirts of town. But I do think that historic district needs help in that regard, needs protection.
I concur.
So I guess what I'd like to do, if we can just wrap up and maybe, I think...
I guess one last thing I'd like you to think about is signs that are not visible from the public street. For example, the fast food drive-through menu signs, the oil change, enter here signs. Right now, if it's a sign, it's a sign, but there's many signs in town that are no, that are not at all visible from the city street, but we are required to regulate them as signs.
Enter here is not visible from the city street?
Going around the back or something like that.
Well, you know, I'm saying, you, you go to...
Power wash.
Whatever the oil change places are.
Speedy oil.
You drive around back and you've got lubrication here and, and tune-up here, and those are signs, but you can't see them from Woodbury Avenue.
I don't understand the issue.
Well, we're required, because there's signage, to, to penalize the owner on how much more signage he can have.
It counts in the square foot of the yard.
That's like sort of if a tree falls in the forest and nobody hears it, I mean, if nobody sees the sign...
I agree completely.
But isn't, the, the sign definition is on land in view of the general public, so that, that land would be in view of the general public even though it's not visible from the public way?
I haven't seen that in the ordinance.
Maybe, maybe it's not the, maybe I've already fixed that.
That would be good.
I don't think it's... Don't think it's in the existing ordinance.
No, it is, it says on land in view of the general public in the existing ordinance, so sign is not a sign unless, unless the general public can see it.
What page are you on in the district?
Page one dash eleven.
David, the land would be in view.
Right.
Definitions of a sign.
Are they no longer general public when they own the property?
It's not the general public, if you're going to try to, to patronize a business, that's not the general public.
Yeah, but you're, you're, you are the public when you're on that property.
So I, yeah, I drive around the back of the building as a member of the public and I can see the sign.
All right.
It's interpretation.
I think that's, that's interpretation, I would say that the general public are people who are, who are on public, on the public way or public land.
Then, then say that.
Yeah.
Signs from view on, on a public way or something.
Or on residential property perhaps, something like that.
Certainly not trying to make this more complicated, but, here's, here's my only thought on that one, is that, in its personal opinion, I have a house where, at certain times of the year, I can see signs on the bypass, that may be in the back of their, their unit, and I don't care if they weren't internally illuminated, so maybe, don't, we don't care about the square footage of, but as long as they're not externally illuminated...
And you are viewing it as a general public, not from a street, from your adjacent property, and that's...
We're arguing about that. Yeah.
Well, we're saying from the front of the building, signs in the rear should not be, you know, illuminated, or whatever.
I think Tony's hitting why it was written that way.
Yeah.
Right, right, signs from the rear of the building, you know...
If they're not illuminated.
Not considered signage. Boom.
Another one that we allow is...
I was saying, I didn't want to make it too complicated.
No, that's, that's easy.
Yeah, another one we allow though is directional signs, as long as they don't have a logo on it.